We're on scouts. What do you have?
What it do, what it do?
Welcome back. We are here for another week. Running behind the gun here, still getting set up. She's blowing out here, boys. You may be able to hear it if we're quiet, but she is blowing hard from the northeast. Switch around to the south and uh be quiet here. We can try to still tell you to hear it. How it because the house is like literally shaking right now.
Yeah. Pretty crazy. Hello, everybody. Good morning, good evening, whatever time it is for you, candy cane. My favorite. Oh, my gosh, I have flour all over my sweater. I was uh just making some sourdough tortillas. For uh chicken tacos and everything. They were so good. So that's what we just did before.
Just finished.
Just finished, full bellies. Now we got hot chocolate on the go. So, everybody, you know the drill. Tell us where you're tuning in from. We wanna, that's my favorite thing. We wanna see where you're at. Oh, Asheville.
I just seen a Glover town, what do you have?
I saw Virginia, New Zealand. Oh, my goodness. Louisville, Kentucky, Alaska, Scotland.
Fayetteville.
Berlin, Germany. Wow, Tampa, Florida. Oh, my gosh, here we go. Mississippi. California, New Brunswick, Perth, Australia. Michigan.
Denver, one month.
Wow. Manitoba. Vancouver Island, Dubai.
Was that one up there, Whibley Island? Where's that?
Whibley.
Whibley Island.
Whibley Island, Northwest Pennsylvania, Maine, Denver, Indiana, Baltimore. Wow.
All over the world, baby. So many Americans.
Joyzy. We got a Joyzy in here. Jersey. Wow. Florida, London, baby. Yes. Texas, eighty-six degrees today. Good lord, that's hot.
Thought we slowed the chat down. We we put settings on the chat tonight. People asked us to do it. Um we tried to slow the chat down so it came in a little bit smoother. Um I guess not slow enough.
There's just lots of scouts there.
Yeah, lots of scouts, great. Seven hundred ninety-six country now, boys, welcome.
Holy smokes. Yeah, holy smokes, keep it up. Knoxville, Tennessee. Dublin, Ireland.
Viva Las Vegas, no shit. There's someone watching from Vegas right now?
Yeah.
What's that? Blake who?
Blake uh.
Blake Sparkman. Holy shit.
Wow.
Viva Las Vegas.
That's awesome. St. John's, yes, yes, Saskatchewan.
Scoville.
Oh, my gosh, I love it. Southern Australia, so cool. There, Mary's Town. There are so many of y'all from all over the globe. I like, I wonder right now if you could put a pin on everyone's location, like where they just said, the whole map would light up. Isn't that crazy to think about? Oh, my goodness. Well, hello, hello loves Norway, Scotland. Oh, my goodness.
Jane Williams.
Jerry. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, Jerry.
Labrador. Oh, another Las Vegas, Roman, holy smokes.
Wow, Niagara Falls.
Hey, we got some new fees. Of course, we have some hometown representing new fees.
Here we go.
Nine hundred thirty-five scouts.
Wow.
Yeah, boys, we are back. This is town hall meeting with number six.
Six.
Six, six weeks in. Um yeah, time goes quick. I don't know if it goes quick for you guys as for us, but uh we feel like we're in some kind of time warp out here, especially going, you know, our week is like Sunday to Sunday.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's like, okay, Sunday is like the cutoff, pop the video, um and also the reset during Sunday.
Yeah.
Um and Monday, we start all over again. The weeks just go.
And I think this being like either a Wednesday or Thursday check-in also makes it feel like it's really fast.
Yeah. It's like, oh shit, it's already town hall meeting.
It's not a bad thing. It's actually pretty nice because, yeah, otherwise you just get lost in the week and not really knowing what day it is until you're like, oh, my gosh, it's Saturday. Better get on it.
Yeah. Here we are. God love you all for being here, boys. Um oh, Anthony Bor- Bourdain?
Bourdain.
Five bucks, thank you, Anthony.
Is that the Anthony Bourdain?
It's spelled different, I think.
Yeah, it is. Texas in the house, wah wah.
Prestige Worldwide, baby, Anthony. What's up, everybody? That was either or that. That was fucking awesome. Oop, I dropped it. I dropped one.
Two minutes in.
Get scouted. Scout it. Oh, yeah, like that Chris.
Get scouted, rode in.
It's Chris. Yeah, boys, we're still doing it. Um let's show you the numbers. Right now, we're at seventy hundred one members. Um we have brought in fourteen thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars so far from the memberships, which is absolutely amazing. In total with that and all the super likes that come in in these chats, um this will not include yet, so we're just doing it now. All in all, we're at nineteen thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars. Or like, you know, thirty-seven dollars off of twenty grand.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
Juniper, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Oh, scouts from Astoria, Oregon.
Oregon.
Jake Smith, you both seem to be much better spirits this week.
Yes.
Do you know what? Yeah.
Yes, Jake, thanks for saying that. We are in better spirits. Sorry, let me unwrap this thing. I know it's like a little crackly. Yes, we are in better spirits this week. It's been a good week. Um we actually went into St. John's, the capital city, uh the big city here in Newfoundland. Um yeah, this uh last few days, we just got back, what?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday, got back yesterday evening. We had to wait to come in because the wind was really high, so we got back a little bit later than planned. But we went into town and we celebrated my birthday, which is actually this Saturday, the fifteenth. But we went in early um so that I could go get an ultrasound. So we did that, which was super cool. So we got eyes on the baby, which was wonderful to see. And yeah, they're happy, healthy, growing wonderfully. Um yeah, they're super cute. Oh, my goodness. And it's just one baby. I know I say they because we're not sharing the gender yet. It'll be a whole reveal when we do. But um yeah, to see them moving around and like super active in there was amazing. Matt got a little bit squeamish, but I think.
I wasn't.
I think for anyone who hasn't seen like an X-ray or like an ultrasound before, it's pretty weird. And it was weird. I was like laughing, giggling, being like, oh, my god, that's what's happening. Ah, my god, kind of freaky, like it is. But um amazing. And yeah, the baby is doing really good. So any of y'all have been wondering or like worried about health of baby, do not worry, they're super good and very adorable and they have a very cute little button nose. So, yeah.
You look stowed.
Yes.
Look pretty stowed.
Yes, healthy, like little belly on them, which is awesome. So it was really cool to see that. Oh, thank you, guys, for all the birthday wishes. Uh you guys are so sweet. Yeah.
Bunch more coming up here.
Turning twenty-seven. Crazy.
Actually.
Little Cletus.
Actually, and a new member. Yeah, we get, it shows how many new members come in here.
Oh, wow.
I don't know how the whole gifting thing works, the member gifting thing.
I think someone buys the memberships and then it just randomly goes to somebody. I'm pretty sure, pretty sure.
CJ Jenkins.
Thank you, CJ.
CJ. Rusty Nuts Outdoor.
Adventures, maybe? Rusty Nuts, thank you. I love that. Yeah, so we're really excited, really excited. If you guys want, we're not gonna share the gender, but if you want, feel free to go ahead and guess if you think it's a boy or a girl. And we'll see what uh what the majority of you scouts think. I know lots of your names were uh were boy last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I I figured it was boy the whole time personally.
Yeah.
Oh, girl, a lot of girls.
Ooh.
Apparently, the girl-boy thing, according to Patty, your neighbor, an old wife tale is if uh, what is it?
You carry, if you carry. Yeah, if you carry high, it's like a girl. If you carry low, it's a boy. Who knows?
Lots of girls.
Oh, we're pretty fifty-fifty. Yes, it's my Saturn return this year. I feel like life is going wonderfully. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, things are boy, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Was the baby holding a chainsaw?
Oh, we talked all the time about like our plans on that and how to, you know, instill the worker mentality into this kid. And and not just like to be useful, also so they want to. Um.
Yeah.
You know, how do you, I feel like we have a pretty good opportunity out here in this little bubble to, you know, experiment, you know? Um and see what it's like to raise a kid in a place like this, you know?
Yeah.
With all the modern stuff too and don't even be totally disconnected, so have all the information in the world, um but be in a place like this. Um, yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely a unique opportunity. You know, there's not any other kids on the island. I'm the youngest one here. Like until this baby comes, I'm the youngest one here. Um minus the other cabin goers kids, right? But um yeah, it's gonna be really interesting to see how that works out and yeah, make sure they're all socialized and everything. Um.
That'll be a tough part.
Yeah, that will be the tough part. Yeah, well, they'll probably have sleepovers or something here. That way they can have good quality time with friends, you know? I don't know.
We'll see.
Tented out in the backyard. That's what I loved to do when I was a kid.
Maybe by then, five years from now, they might have a couple iRobot test friends, you know, who knows? We're not crazy, we're on a crazy ride here in the timeline we're all on. Um, yeah. Anyway, boys, um yeah, welcome back. We're still into this number six. Not a whole lot of updates this week. Um it's not gonna be groundbreaking every week. Things take time, slow process. Um lawyers are still doing their thing. Um still seeking um do all all the same plans. We're still doing our uh looking for board members, same top or same coupler at the top of the list. Honestly, barely anything with all the paperwork side of things this week. We've been in St. John's. Um and we went to St. John's on Sunday. I kind of told myself going in, there's a cab, going in for Kelly's birthday. And try and turn the brain off a bit and just let her go for a second. Um so yeah, I wasn't really responding to many emails, wasn't really tuned in that much too, which is good. That's maybe why we do feel um extra good right now is because we kind of let our minds rest for a second. We're just present. Eating pizza and, you know, look for some dessert to eat every night for Kelly's birthday.
Eating pizza, man. Pizza on demand. If you're in St. John's, piato pizza, oh.
Dang.
Best pizza in St. John's. Woo, wood fired. Yeah, gosh, that was so good. We had a pizza coma. Went back to the hotel and literally like fell asleep for hours.
Yep.
Which was unheard of for us, really.
Um a wall or a thing of eggs, I'm probably gonna forget later. Let's tell them about that song. Um soggy.
Soggy Blue House. We have a buddy. We have a scout who wrote a song about us and the house here.
I can't even really go his name off the top of my head. We'll find it and mention it again later. But just type into YouTube at some point, soggy blue house. S-O-G-G-Y, blue house. And uh.
It'll pop up. Maddie and I, yeah, Maddie and I watched it last night and I was like tearing up. I was like, holy smokes, I love this. And I love the buddy's guitar playing. If you're watching, dude, you rock. That was so awesome.
Was it there? Is that it? Joe? Is that you, Joe?
I don't know.
Joe Trimmer? Either way, we're gonna make sure everyone knows who it is because it's a fellow scout too.
Yeah.
Great way to use um our community here, helping a fellow scout. It's the second video on this YouTube channel. Um it looks really good and it looks like a musician, a musician.
A magician.
They're doing. Um so I mean, that'd be, that'd be great to support him.
Yeah. I don't think so. No, so sorry, no, not me. No, we'll find it. I forgot his name. I think it starts with a J. Anyway, rock on, my fellow Scorpio. Yes, Roy, happy early birthday to you as well. Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, it was a really good, really good song. I liked it a lot.
Um yeah, so since, I mean, a whole lot of groundbreaking stuff, we got some stuff to touch on here in our list. But we're figured tonight we're supposed to be here and have a BS. Um talk to you guys CJ. Again, please sub, my guy, our fifty bucks CJ. Please sub Amazon, Amazon registry for baby gifts. This is a big thing in this house.
This is a big thing. The Amazon registry for gifts. Maddie is not about it. I'm on the fence of, I know there's so many of you guys who want to contribute and it's basically like a birthday gift for the baby, which is super cool. Um but I don't want to, you know, make anyone feel like they have to give anything or spend their money on baby things for us. Um but at the same time, I love gift giving, you know? Um I don't know, what do you guys think? Because we've gotten a lot of the essentials, I think, so far. Um.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't, you know, put anything that's expensive on there, you know, but.
Too much stuff, too much stuff.
Maddie's worried about the amount of stuff. Having a baby, there's gonna be so much stuff anyway.
House already full, boys. Look at the counter behind us, look.
Oh, yeah, I got something. Look at this.
All the stuff.
I bought a nutcracker. Hello, everyone.
They don't have those in the States.
Yes, they do.
The real ones.
Oh.
Maddie shot it.
Oh, getting on ya. Yeah.
Cloth diapers is gonna be wild. The cloth diapers thing, I'm just gonna tell you, we're gonna, you know, share our experiences, how this all goes. And the cloth diaper I'm putting into on record right now, it's gonna be, same as a bad idea, but that's all Kelly.
Yeah.
You know, I'll do what I gotta do, but I ain't gonna be down there scraping all cloth diapers clean.
Whatever, that's fine. I know you won't anyway. I'm totally fine with it. I'm on the side of like, hmm. Ah, there's, that's very sensitive. And note, let me just preface, no shade to any mom or any dad or anybody who regular diapers, Pampers, pull-ups, whatever, to your baby. I was raised like that, whatever. But to think like all the stuff that's put on diapers.
Falcon Five.
Yes, we are gonna get a big laundry machine, a nice, good one.
Way to look at, we were all in diapers. I never had no cloth diapers.
Yes, but if you think about it, what is in the diaper that makes it poof up? Chemicals. That stuff's not natural. Baby rash, baby eczema, all sorts of stuff like that. Like, that's a high contributor. I was just talking to our neighbor Judy about it. She said she clothed diapered her first daughter, no skin troubles at all. Second daughter, she did not cloth diaper and she was getting rashes all the time. So that's one person's story. But for me, I'm like, yeah, I'd rather go, I mean, we're going no plastic, bro. I mean, I'd rather not. Um.
Yeah, people.
Doing ten diapers. Plus nowadays, there's such, like, the brands and things they have for the cloth diapers are so robust and really, really good. Um I personally don't feel like it's gonna be a crazy, crazy thing. It'll be the most important laundry, yes, a hundred percent. Um but I feel like in the long run, it's gonna be better. Plus, way more cost effective. Diapers are so expensive. And babies go through like eight to ten diapers like a day possibly, which is so much. I've been a nanny for many children before. And it is incredible how many diapers kids go through. Yeah, give cloth diapers a go. That's right.
A lot of people are cloth diaper people, right now.
Thank you, guys.
I thought the cloth diapers thing was like for lunch, full. You know, may as well move to LA right now and get it over with, but I guess not. I guess cloth diapers are kind of cut in.
Yeah, cloth diapers are in and that's how they did it way back in the day.
See that? Matt Blake can always do both if you need. That's what I'm all about.
Yeah, we're gonna get some extra on hand, like on the go diapers that are like, you know, the co- the natural bamboo hemp, whatever. Um Maddie's sister has a good recommendation for a couple of brands that her and her friends have used that are very like non-toxic, like easy to dispose diaper diapers. But just thinking of how much trash accumulates here in general, uh I don't want to add a bunch of disgusting diapers to the mix and like, you know, that's a ton of diapers. We're gonna have a mountain of diapers.
We're still on this diaper topic.
You got me started, sorry.
Yeah, let's move past the diapers people, lord. That was bad with the ultrasound.
All right, next question. Okay, I.
Let the cloth diapers thing pass first.
Okay, yes. There we go.
Shitty subject, exactly.
Yes, Slim Styles. You guys are so funny. Yeah, a girl needs to gab, Moonwork gets it. That's right. Yeah, it's like fun chat time for me.
Yeah, man, chat away, girl, chat away. Guys, what are prep going? And that's the proper question there, Edward. Edward, was it? Ellenberg? I always wonder prep going. Kelly, that's a good question for you.
Well, I'm not doing much of it.
Oh.
We're honest now. Uh, no, I'm doing more house things, but also I'm being very slow at it. Uh Maddie's got a lot of the wood taken care of. We still need more. Um especially now that we have our second stove in here at Yvonne. The Valley Comfort, which is like the big stove in the other room, the living room, takes chunks of wood about two feet long. And they're really big and most of those pieces of wood are cut to that length. So and and our other cook stove takes little short pieces. So we're gonna have to like make more. I say we, but.
Busier than a baby with two woodstoves now. As someone said, I don't know who said that, but I love, I love that thing. It was real now.
Someone said, why not build a recording studio? God love you, my friend. We will at one point, but we need the bathroom first.
Kelly was gonna play tonight, actually.
Yes, I know. Please don't be upset with me, you guys. I was gonna, I had intentions to play like a couple songs, but ah.
It stuck up on us.
It stuck up on us and I just don't feel like it after making dinner. Dinner took me like two hours to make homemade sourdough freaking tortillas and my back hurts. And I just didn't feel like it. So maybe next week. And maybe I'll have a new song for you guys too. Maybe I can put that out in the in the universe and then it'll just come to me. That'd be cool.
Someone said here, someone said again, boys, soggy blue house. What was the author's name? Some, a bunch of people said it. Want to share his name.
Do you want me to look it up right now? If you look up soggy blue house, do it after this live, but soggy blue house, you won't forget it.
Someone said it here. Never find that, are we?
Nah, brother.
What's his name?
Litter Rip.
Did you read my post about the flu being too close to? Did you read my post about that flu being too close to combustible, dangerous? Andy Philpott. No, I guess we didn't. It's supposed to combustible.
Ryan Eisenhardt.
Ryan Eisenhardt.
Thank you, guys. Soggy Blue House, Ryan Eisenhardt. After this live, go and check it out. Buddy wrote such a wonderful song about us in the blue house here. It's really sweet. I was like crying listening to it last night.
So Andy's saying that the flu, I guess, I guess the flu in the wood stove is too close to combustibles. Um no, I mean, talking with this stove here, no, um should burn it fine.
Yeah.
The flu, I guess you're talking about the chimney in the back with the flapper. That's all in next to a rock, nothing to catch there. Um, yeah. Should burn pretty good. Burning pretty hot. We are, might not look like it, watching these videos, we're very fire safe. I don't know what my parents did right with me, best one thing they drove in me, propane safety and fire safety. Um I'm almost OCD about checking the stove before bed. Gotta check everything four times and wiggle everything four times, that kind of weird shit. Uh before everything is put to bed for a night and same with smoke detectors. There are fire extinguishers here. Seen a bunch of people ask where the fire extinguishers are. They're here, upstairs and here, um and two smoke alarms. Um and a carbon dioxide detector, that's right, boogie man, good man. Um so yeah, no, we're pretty safe comes to that. And you need to, because right here, you know, not only is there no insurance in any of this, um but this is all we got. And there's no one gonna show up here and uh, you know, save the blaze if this place goes up. So far, apparently, no nothing is us, so.
Yes. We're very careful. And I'm very good at the what?
So, nothing.
Oh. Oh, a Scout Chocolate Factory. Oh, my gosh, that'd be super cool. Someone said, what about Scout Chocolate Factory? Is your windows, Joe says, is your window still cracked? Yes, it is. We have not replaced it and today Maddie did a final fix with a piece of tuck tape. Calling you out, bro.
Blowing her, she's blowing right now.
No, she is blowing, but we'll get her. We'll get her.
Andrew G, thank you. Uh I know it's might be too much for upgrade, but would you ever get a TV, movies or things like that? We're not, we're not anti-TV. Um we're definitely anti-TV. Look what we do. Love movies, always love movies, love shows. Um I watch them all the time, but no, we don't really feel, maybe someday, but probably not. We don't really feel like we need a TV. Uh we wanna watch something, we use laptop.
Yeah.
Laptop works great. It's mobile, lay it beside the bed, lay it right here. Uh watch away. Seinfeld, someone says Seinfeld, N B, yep, that's right.
That's right, Maddie's, Maddie's trying to get me on the Seinfeld game.
Seinfeld for life, baby.
The Office, if you know, you know, yes, Scott. That's actually our favorite. Well, my favorite, I'd say.
Yeah, why is the picture reversed?
I don't know. Is the picture reversed? I'm currently on the left side.
Oh.
What?
Chiefy, uh what's that? He said that? Chiefy's nuts?
Chefy's nuts.
Chefy's nuts, Maddie. You ever miss essential? Hey, man, of course.
What does that have?
Rig days. Oil field, you know?
I don't understand.
Of course. Well, you, just like anything, any job that was like tough at the time, you look back, you always look back with nostalgia, right?
Yeah.
And oh, yeah, I'm thinking about the oilfield days lots, kind of how, you know, wouldn't mind sitting in one of those land yachts, cruising along with Timmy's in the morning on the way to work with the boys and talking shit constantly. Best part of working on the rigs was you could talk shit all day long and people couldn't get away from you. They had to be there too, so you can just joke around constantly.
Yes.
Bad as you want when it comes to the jokes. Oh, god, it's so good.
You definitely still do that.
No, to Seinfeld. Any hockey, no, we haven't, we haven't watched any hockey, no, um don't follow it.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't followed hockey. I don't think I've ever followed hockey, honestly. I don't think I've ever followed any sport, to be completely honest with you.
Yeah.
Watched a lot of sports, love playing sports, um but was never a follower or never wa- followed anything close enough to really keep up to it.
Back in the day, when I lived in the States, we were really big into football. Uh my family is a big Steelers family. Any Steelers fans out there, wah wah. But other than that, like, no, I didn't really follow any sports. Ah, that's hilarious.
Yes, Galene Smith, we are getting, going to get a washing machine. And the new addition that we're putting on out there, it's not just for the bathroom, that's gonna be a bathroom slash laundry mechanical room. You know, put a washing machine in there, no drawers, washing machine.
Yeah.
It'll deep freeze, um stuff like that.
Yes, that's right.
Derek, one pound fifty, baby, all pounds, that's, pounds are big money over here. Thank you, sir. Derek?
Yeah, Derek.
Big money over here. We love the pounds. You convert that to Canadian, that's like four bucks.
Woo. That's awesome.
Michael, welcome to Camp Scout.
Yes, Michael.
Two thousand eighty-three scouts here right now.
Goodness gracious.
How's Patrick Gord these days? Sounder good?
Ah, Larry, you're so sweet for asking.
Patty's still here, Judy.
Yeah, that's right. We were just hanging out, working with both of them today, actually. Yeah.
Yep, Gord uh just came down tonight through this dirty, dirty weather. I went over your water like two hours ago and Gord just showed up. I mean, it's black and it's blowing, raining, um dirty.
Typical Gord fashion. We call him the midnight rider because he's always either coming to St. John's or leaving in the dark. I think it's his thing. He just loves it.
Yeah. Did we, did we get Gord's deck all cleaned up? Left four dead, sixty-nine? Good handle. Um no. I mean, bare minimum. It's still, it's still pretty rough over there.
Yeah.
We were talking about what Cord, Seanie Roy was and uh next week, we're really gonna tackle those trails and get it all fixed up over there. Cora's Wharf needs some love too.
Yes. Yeah, someone said they just listened to the song. What a great song. Sweet. I love that you loved it.
Yeah, I hope, you hope. A bunch of people will listen to that song and encourages, buddy is a Ryan, right? He says Ryan?
I can't remember now.
God, we're such goldfish.
I know, we are such goldfish. Matt called me Dory the other day.
Oh, we're in St. John's. You know what? We went to St. John's, it's supposed to be like, yeah, proper, no work to do, just relax. Um recover, whatever you wanna call it. Uh Kelly's birthday, so it was a complete write-off. And uh I felt like the entire time, I don't know if I relaxed one minute, like really, I always felt like there was somewhere to go. Um or or always like looking at the clock, waiting for something, something's coming and like never at full peace, never just like really kicked the boots off and it's laid out for a four-hour nap. That never happened. I don't think I had any day naps at all the entire time we were. I don't think I haven't had any day naps at all entire time we were in St. John's. I was up five o'clock in the morning in the hotel room, nothing to do. No woodstoves to light, no nothing to go shag around with, I'm there, by five thirty, I'm just sitting in the bathtub in there. Just like burning daylight trying to wait for Kelly to wake up.
I know, it was really funny, I felt a little bit bad, but also it was, it was pretty funny for me. Yeah, literally, no joke, he would wake up at five in the morning, pitch black outside. I was still snuggled up in bed, of course, and the dogs were snuggled up in bed. But I'd hear the shower go off and then I'd hear the bath run and I was like, well, there he goes for the next forty-five minutes. And then he'd come back out, jump right back to bed, and yeah, I wasn't waking up until like eight o'clock. And then I was ready to go get like some breakfast and stuff and like whatever, but. Yeah, poor thing, must have been hard for you.
I know it's hard, like, I can handle being bored, it's not being bored, more like. It wasn't a big, I mean, it was nice to take a break from some things, but. It wasn't like a loungy.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, lazy few days, we're always going somewhere, mainly where we're going was somewhere to eat for Kelly. Kelly had a big list of places she wanted to eat and things she wanted to eat for her trip in there, I guess, you know, the hormones of her pregnancies making her go through crazy. Um, and that's all it was, was just a food run.
Pretty much, pretty much. It was so good, I loved eating and no dishes, excuse me, no dishes to do, oh.
Andy Philpot, I'm not a troll, I truly care, I'm a woodtack, God love you, no, hundred percent, Andy wouldn't think you are a troll, and God love you, thank you for. Donation to Camp Scout, um, yeah, no, I I genuinely think it's fine, um, while you're talking with the flu being too close to combustibles. Yeah, I really do think it's fine.
Yeah.
And if you, if you, I'll keep my here, let me know what you're talking about, maybe we're missing something, but. Um, we looked at it, Patty looked at it, uh, Gord has seen it, and we all think it's pretty safe.
Yes, yes.
Thank you though for your concern, God love you, really do. Twenty-one hundred fifty-four scouts. Who is that guy, who is Chiefy's nuts? Kelly, you got a CD.
No, I don't have a CD. Maybe someday soon, would you guys be interested in a CD? I know a lot of people like stream music nowadays. I've never actually made like a run of CDs, but. If you guys would be int- into that, I could totally like sign them and send them to you guys, that'd be pretty cool. How do the animals do in the storm? So the only animals we have here right now are. Eggs and bacon, chicken and pigs. Yes, the pigs are soon going, but they fared out very well. They all just snuggle up and hang out in the old sheep shed, we actually moved them over into the sheep and goat pen. Um, to rest the ground where the pigs were, and also the shelters are a little bit better, they started like pushing doors and stuff like that, so we just moved them over. But you'd be amazed at how fast they tear up the ground.
It's amazing how fast they tear ground up.
Pigs are sturdy, that's right. That's right. No more goats, no, the goats are over at our friend's house, they're wintering over there, they've got a lot more forage, they've got a really big sturdy barn. A lot of other goats to hang out with, um.
They're getting bread.
Yes, and they're getting bread, it's just a better situation for them for the winter time, cause winters will be tough here, plus being pregnant hauling water sucks.
Like, when they come back here in the spring, they'll be, uh, you know, pregnant, we'll have lambs and baby, what do you call a baby goat?
We're not breeding the goats.
Breeding goats, oh yeah, that's right, we're not breeding goats, just.
No, it's just all females, no. Just the sheep, just the sheep. Terry, I wanna see your cats, Terry, I gave the cats over to Gord's sister. We couldn't, uh, we couldn't have, uh, cats here anymore, they really wanted to get outside and they were peeing all over everything and very unhappy, so. We gave them over to Gordy's sister, where they are living wonderfully outside, hunting all the time, which is way better for them. They didn't get along with our neighbor's cat and we respect our elders, so we weren't gonna start pushing that, um, and cause problems, so.
Some of us lost in today's society, respecting our elders, Falcon Five, any board member updates, uh, said it earlier, maybe you missed it. Um, no, we're still, I mean, there's still applications coming in, if you have sent an application in. Uh, we haven't heard anything back, don't take it to hurt, don't think that, um, it wasn't good enough or whatever, just haven't got to it yet, um. Like I said, these past three, four days, we kinda just. We're just, you know, doing our thing, but kinda just put the phones down, uh, we really weren't on the phones or laptops much at all in the past three, four days, kinda just took a little bit of, um. Mental break from that.
Yeah.
And spent our time chasing that restaurant in St. John's instead. But, uh, we will, we will have board member updates at some point, when we do, you'll know for sure.
Yeah.
You know what I think with this whole slow thing, I think it's slow up there, I think we still see it at full speed.
Are you sure?
I think so, cause look how slow it goes up there.
Hmm, do you wanna turn it back on to regular?
No, 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 I think it's good.
Okay. Hey from Fogo Island, hey, hey.
Quarter broke, curly NF.
Curly. Yeah, great situation for all them animals, yes, Waters, thank you, yeah, we, of course, we try to do what's best for the animals, cause.
Ryan.
Ryan!
Thank you.
Yes.
That's Ryan, that's the, that's the artist, that's.
Ryan Eisenhardt, soggy blue house, right under that comment, Christine Willen said, remember his name, Ryan Eisenhardt, soggy blue house. Ryan, we love your song, we listened to it last night. And I was literally in tears by the end of it, being like, oh, my heart, this is such a sweet song. Yeah, and I love your guitar playing, right from the intro, I was like, this dude's got style. I don't know where you're from, maybe tell us where you're from, I love, yeah, Leon, the soggy bottom boy, yeah, if you ever see No Brother But Routh Thou, that's really funny. That's a funny play on that, yeah, that's actually one of my favorite movies.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, but thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan, we ne- we never actually responded to your email yet, and then emailed us, that's how we found your video. Um, yeah, we did see it and we love it, and we hope everyone, or a lot of people go watch it. And hopefully it encourages him to, uh.
Keep on writing.
Keep on writing, baby, keep putting them out, keep going.
You know what, Ryan, you inspired me, as soon as you shared that with us, I was like, oh my gosh. That makes me wanna go write another song and like actually put a song out, like, look at that, he just said, I'm gonna do it and did it, so. You're inspiring me, thank you.
That's true.
And anybody else who writes music or does art or anything, please be inspired by that, because, you know. We all say like it's not easy to put yourself out there, but sometimes it can be, if you just like say, eh, forget it, I'm not gonna worry about. Judgment or whatever, or if it's perfect, that's the big thing, don't worry about it if it's perfect, we all don't want perfect anyway. We, you know, we could listen to AI music or whatever if we wanted perfect, but I don't, I don't do that, and I don't think a lot of people do that, um. And it's the human aspect that makes music so special, the soul. And the different variations in someone's voice or how they play or what they do, um, that's the important, that's the magic of it, and same thing with art. You know, oh, sorry.
On there. Ellen from one Kelly.
Kelly, morning, from one Kelly to another, I'm so excited for you guys, you're having a baby, it's going to be a boy. From Hartford County, Maryland, God bless, thank you, Kelly, that is so sweet. And who knows, maybe so, maybe so, maybe not.
Relax, honey, I'm in warp, see? She gotta ride.
Uh, who's this other person?
I don't know. Charlotte.
Oh, I'm just gonna answer her, do Angel Forty-four keeps asking doula or midwife, doula, and I'm looking for a midwife, please, don't worry. Everything will be fine. Not worried about it, very confident, the Lord would not put me in danger in harm's way like that. We've, uh, got a really solid, you know, plan and are very confident in it as well. And I'm a healthy, happy person, so I think it's gonna go good, of course, I don't know everything, obviously, I can't tell the future, but. I think a positive outlook and positive attitude goes a long way, rather than being like. Fear mongered or thinking that terrible things are gonna happen, I don't do that, so. I appreciate you asking, but yes, we will have a doula here, at least a doula. Leon, you're so sweet.
Somebody, somebody got handles.
Yeah, I know, you guys do, you're so creative. Any new plans for a bigger well?
Yes. We do.
Go ahead, pops.
Next year, we're not gonna have no droids, I don't know what the plan is, but we are gonna do better water situation we got to, we got to next, next year. We're still hauling buckets of water, when we disconnected the water lines to come into the house to build this section here. Uh, nothing's got rehooked yet, we are back on full bucket of water and it's one of those things, kinda got used to hauling buckets of water again. Um, and just never made the time to go and rehook it all up and replumb the whole thing, crazy that might sound at home. One of those things, um, swept on your rug and you're just, ah, well, buckets ain't solved, I always keep using buckets.
After all the rain we've had the last few like days and weeks. Oh, even the well next to our house that you guys saw us re-dig out, uh, is completely full.
The top.
Completely full to the top. And we had that big, really bad drought in the summer where like. Maybe this much water for like weeks. So to see it super high is wonderful, really good, nice and easy to get dishwater for sure.
Oh no, where was it?
Patrick, calling the kid Dwight.
Dwight from, oh, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think so, Dwight from the office. That's actually Maddie's favorite character.
Of course.
It's Dwight, Dwight is hilarious.
They all wanna be Dwight, um, the office.
He is hilarious.
Any big weekend plans, Caleb Moss, weekend plans are this is it, baby. We are building this house, making these videos, growing this baby. Trying to keep the wheels in the whole thing, cutting firewood, hauling water.
Staying warm.
Staying warm, yeah, we just had four days off, you know, Sunday until yesterday, um, see, I know, it's just full giver mode. And Kelly's birthday is Saturday, so I gotta bake a birthday cake Saturday morning.
Yeah, we're gonna make a birthday cake, T, dot, 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 brother, just ask the question, he says, dang, it's impossible to get a question through. I read that one, so if you have another question, just ask the question.
What's the question?
I don't know, he just said he can't get a question through, any plans for a greenhouse? Yeah, so that's kinda what the Quonset thing earlier was. Oh.
T, T again, I've been answering.
T, my sweetheart, just ask it one more time, now I see your name, um. Yeah, the Co- the Quonset was kinda like a greenhouse, but we need to actually like shut it off or build an actual greenhouse. I think a greenhouse made of old windows would be super cool, I've seen those done before and they look very artsy, which I love.
Do you fear land erosion at your house? Not normally, if all the rain has been here the past couple of days, will make you think. But no, I highly doubt it, she's pretty solid where it is, it's, it's very rocky, right here.
And we're high up on the hill, now, like you guys saw over by Gord's house.
Uh, T, did Milwaukee reach out to you but all, buy free tools, contact them, but your channel months back? Um, no, no.
But thank you for contacting them on our behalf, who knows, maybe we'll hear something.
There are, um, one tool company has contacted us and we know another one wants to, um, about doing something with this.
Yeah.
Sponsoring, uh, we talked about that last week, and they kinda talked some. Small potatoes, we s- we told them we're looking for big potatoes if we're going whole corporate route, and we're gonna put. Someone's corporate brand beside our camp scope brand here in this whole community, and I asked you guys to endorse that. Uh, it's gonna have to be significant, so, we'll wait and see.
Yeah. Maybe you should turn the slowness off because I just saw the message of Kelly saying something about the baby, like literally just pop up now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's pretty far behind.
Does it seem like there's a lot of lag for you guys? It shouldn't be, it's thirty seconds.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of lag.
We tried to slow the chat down so you guys can get your questions in, but let us know if it's a little too slow.
T, basically you need to contact them, so I tried on your behalf, but I guess it worked, thank you, T, God love you for trying.
Yes, thank you so much, that is awesome, oops, excuse me.
Do you want partnerships or sponsorship, DC Young, do you want partnership or sponsorship for your YouTube videos, or do you prefer to keep to long for all that? Maybe some of those, yeah, we don't want, um, partnership sponsor for the YouTube channel, no.
Yeah.
We've been contacted daily, um, by someone that wants to sponsor a video and give us a piece of. Kit from a solar small solar panel to, uh, you know, water purifying tablets, you name it. Um, wanna do, you know, paid promotion or whatever they call it, we haven't done one, um, not that there's anything wrong with that, lots of people do, and it's just fine. We don't wanna turn this thing into a big infomercial for you guys, um, I'm sure there's probably. Commercials you gotta go through as is, the YouTube ones, we don't need to be out here trying to sling you guys stuff. Ever something that's like, we're like, yeah, this is great, you guys need to know, we'll let you know about it.
Yeah.
Um, it's like Yamaha, shit goes Yamaha stuff all the time, love Yamaha, do we have any kind of deal with Yamaha? No, um. That's fine, uh, we're not just gonna take something, someone gives us some free sh- stuff and a couple bucks, we're not just gonna start.
Yeah.
Honzing off here, but if a big, like we said last week. If some real big company came into us, um, a company that we all agreed was, was good and legit, like some big power tool company. And you're like, here you go, here's a, you know, here's a hundred grand to go buy your piece of land for.
Scout land.
Scout land number two, um, I would definitely be willing to sit down and look at that and think about that, and a lot of people agreed that, yeah, we would.
Yeah, but of course, same thing, like, we wouldn't just take a deal from any brand or anything like that, it would have to be something we actually believe in. Actually have tried and tested, and that we would be hundred percent comfortable having you guys be on board up with it too.
So I love keeping this, I mean, our friend Derek, Mr. D, you know who you are, I hope you're watching, you and your old lady. Um, he said a bunch to me already and keep saying it, keep it simple, um. And there isn't a whole lot of keeping it simple when it comes to starting a proper charity, um, and doing it all legit and dealing with. Big dreams like we're dealing with, it is fairly intricate, but we're trying to keep it simple and basically that means just not stressing out over it, um. You know, it doesn't happen overnight, this is all a slow process, um, the big thing now is that we're building our community and we're all coming together. We're all starting to come to these meetings every week, everyone's watching the videos every Sunday, we're all starting to talk about what we wanna do here, ideas are being shared. Emails are going from you to us and from you to other yous, uh, we're connecting, it's happening. Um, and now we keep on growing, we should keep, keep ticking along, um, the legal side will eventually catch up to it. The big thing we need to get sorted is get that, um, charity entity stamped official on paper. Um, so then we can issue receipts, that's a big one when it comes to like a big donor, a big corporate sponsor. They want that tax receipt, of course, um, that's where we really need to get to, then it can really ramp up for now. We keep doing what we're doing, we keep talking, you keep telling your friends about what you're doing here, uh, what you're a part of. And we should keep on going, like, this is what we've done so far, we're almost at twenty grand, we're actually right now at three hundred fifty-five dollars in this chat tonight. We are over it, we're at like three hundred, uh, or twenty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Wow, goodness gracious.
Congratulations, uh, so we keep on doing this, um. Every month that rolls over, that number will get bigger, um, with the memberships. You know, seventeen hundred members, another month goes by, that'll be another fourteen grand, should be.
Yeah.
You know, um. It's week six now, so in a couple of weeks, we'll be sharing the screenshot of the analytics of the numbers, stuff like I told you guys we would. Um, this is my paper calculations here.
Yes, and the old scratch pad. Did you guys, Kelly says, did you guys get to see the northern lights? Unfortunately, no, it's been so cloudy and rainy. We didn't get to see the incredible northern lights that a lot of people did, all over, all over like the States and everything in Canada, like they were beautiful. I saw photos this morning, but, no, we didn't get to see any and it is completely pitch black outside from the storm, so we won't get to see them tonight. I know, I went outside to pee and I was like getting the heebie jeebies because the wind was howling and, you know, we're like.
Whistling.
Whistling and we're like backed up to the woods and it was so dark, and I was like, vulnerable, I was like, oh my god, I gotta get back inside.
So I got a good question to put in the chat here, oh, someone passed for it, Carla. Carla Snail, God love you, girl, thank you, hurt, hurt, hurt.
Thank you, Carla.
Um, I got a question to put here in the chat, you guys are the ones, um, who are here every Sunday watching the videos, uh, God love you for it. We love you, thank you for supporting, I'm enjoying it, watching them, tell us, you know, you guys are professionals on that side of things. What do you wanna see? What can we do to improve? How can we make these Sunday videos better, um? We're not rigid, we do listen to what you guys say, we do take your opinions and thoughts into consideration, so, um. Oh, I've seen someone say, I'm invisible.
No, is my name invisible? No, Stacy, we see your name.
Yeah, you've caught my name, so I've seen that, um, tell us, Stacy, yeah, tell us, you guys got some good ideas? We're not gonna get them all, obviously, but maybe one of them just stick in her ear and you'll see it on here next week.
Yeah.
More Gord, good.
Love it.
Noni three, God love you, thank you. Slow this thing down.
Make them longer, no changes, keep it the way it is.
Will you ever your sawmill? Yes, me and Gord are actually talking about bringing it out here in Posma next week. Let's see who's making her baby.
Whoa, you wanna see us make a baby? Oh geez, we're not gonna do that on camera. Chris, come on, I'm just joking.
We haven't seen any of the farm animals and.
The blogs lately, that's true, that's true. Drop this down, cause these might disappear in a while.
True.
Farm animals, longer videos.
Longer videos, well, we know that, we try and make them. Longer videos, well, we know that, we try and make them.
Yeah, you guys would be amazed by how, how many clips and how much footage goes into just the forty-five minutes or hour, right? It's crazy.
Don't change a thing, Scott Earl.
Thanks, Dwayne, don't change a thing, thank you, my love. Rock hounding, I was always curious about the rocks here, you know, that's a good idea.
Camping cookie homemade recipes, mm. Come on, come on.
Kate, I would like to see Kate Milli get a makeover. Yes. Oof, goodness me. Outtakes, outtakes are funny, another more gourd, bump, 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 baby bump.
Don't change. Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Love the channel, thanks Terry. Thank you.
Oh, someone said more in town footage, we don't go to town very much, but when we do next time, we can definitely bring the cameras and do that.
Patty is good, watch Terry, yeah, he is, Patty is great.
Patty is really good footage. Blue house Christmas ornament.
Watch Kelly make jewelry.
Have an eighties dance party, oh, I'm into that idea, that'd be fun. More tunes, I will work, I will work on writing some more music.
Yeah, keep it simple, that's what I heard about, keep it simple, God love you, thank you, that's what we'll do. Yeah, we gotta like, how we do it now, um, yeah, it works for us.
Yeah.
Cause we can, we can go along, um, do what we do, uh, all week long, and you know, come, I guess, I've started as late as. Eight o'clock at night on a Saturday, um, and sat there and just crushed it out, for, you know, maybe seven hours.
Yeah, editing.
Editing, get it up, so. It works like that, the way we're doing it works. No more gourd.
My wife, no more gourd, please, my wife is in love. That is so funny, new founder.
New founder.
That is so funny.
That is funny.
Kelly, are you having any cravings from the south we can send you, you know what's crazy, I was craving. Orchard apple cider for months, and I finally found apple cider at the store, so I'm not craving it nearly as much, but. I don't know, I don't know if there's anything really that I'm craving from the south, no snacks or anything like that, nothing like that, maybe like. I don't know, an Appalachian baby quilt, something like that, I don't know.
She's not craving nutting pies.
Matt wants to limit the amount of things getting to our house.
Well, you get, get a sawmill, yes, we got the sawmill, we just gotta get it out here, we bought a used sawmill.
Yeah.
Um, we just gotta bring it out here, which is a bit of a, a bit of an operation.
Yes.
Uh, on the bus, but me and Gord actually talked about tonight, about maybe bringing it out next week, it'll be here soon. What happened to the cats, do you know what happened to cats, cats are gone, they're not gone, cats are gone to our friends.
Yes, over to Gord's sister, they were not happy, and they were not getting along with the other cat, um, Patty's cat here.
Neighbor.
Our neighbor, so we respect the elders, we don't wanna cause problems here, and it's better for them to be where they can be free, and wild and hunt all the time. So, that's where they are, they're happy and healthy.
Welcome to Cats Go, old girl's now, welcome to Cats Go, girl.
Nice.
If you're not craving, you're doing it right, I stay really healthy, no craving, okay, Michelle.
Yeah, girl, yes, Michelle, no crazy cravings, I know, I haven't had any like. Weird cravings at all, only thing I wanted like super bad this week was like lobster mac and cheese and pizza. Um, and those are like my favorite things anyway, so, yes.
Oh, God love ya, Suzanne, you sound tired, man, oh, God love you, you know, I am.
Sleepy, sleepy Maddie.
Yes, I am, girl.
You'll be getting some good sleep tonight, for sure, yeah, today was a long day outside in the cold rain. It was chilly out, I mean, Matty was doing lots of outdoor work, working on the new addition, which is awesome.
Yes.
But yes, look at that, tired.
Walls are up, walls are not all up, but they're going up, and the dishes look good.
Yes.
Real good.
Kelly, are you making necklaces, you know, I have lots of sea glass to make necklaces, and I would love to make like. A big batch and be able to, you know, like sell them off or whatever, I just don't have any more of the wire here, and. Of course, we were totally brain farting and forgot to stop by Michael's or like a craft shop, we were in town, so. I don't have any more wire to do it, so I'll have to either order some or something like that, but I would love to. I would really like to.
Stephanie Ven.
Venig- Venegas.
Venegas, love you guys, love you too.
Love you too, girl.
Kate Milli makeover, a good question.
What?
Michael Ray, who does the editing?
Oh.
Kelly can do it.
I can do it, we both, yes, so we both. Used to split it, basically, before I got pregnant.
Did not used to split it, don't go saying that, Kelly did a couple.
I would jump in there and help, yes, and then I edited all my own blog when you were gone, which was super easy and fun for me. But no, Matty definitely does like all the editing, unless I go and like, do some couple little tweak thingies here and there, but. That's basically just like the nitpicky stuff that like, nobody wants to do, I'll do that stuff.
But Kelly really does do most of filming.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, lately, lately.
Lately, like the last how many months? No, I really love the filming, it's really fun, um, I've always loved photography and videography, um. And to be able to, yeah, record our life and my handsome husband is very fun.
Mangorsha Island Boys parody, I like that.
That's funny, island buys, the island buys. Uh-oh. Yeah, it must have froze. Just trying to make it.
Okay, boys, old pep, yo, getting tired here. You wanna keep going, girl?
Yeah, let's just, uh, here guys, we're gonna log off here in a second, but before we do, feel free to ask your questions.
Diana.
Diana, thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead and ask your last rapid fire questions, and we'll see how many we can answer.
How do you get real construction debris, so many people ask that, we burn it, we burn it, we burn it, we burn it. It all goes to the beach, and it all gets burned, there she go.
Yes.
Uh, why would we do that, cause you can't get it out of here, boys, like we are on an island, you can't drive up this place. There is no municipality, there is no government, there's no nothing out here, it's just us, um, some neighbors, um, that come and go, and, uh. If we didn't burn it out of here, it had to be loaded onto a boat. Dragged back to town, unloaded to a truck and dragged to lord knows where, just for them to throw it in the ground and, and bury it over, so, burn is fine.
Yes. Uh, let's see, let's see.
Oh, bless you, God love you, I bought a lot of.
Oh, oh my, I was like, why is everyone saying bless you, cause I sneezed, thank you guys, it's so freaking sweet, oh my gosh.
Oh, that's a good suggestion.
What?
Right there in the big yellow one, chains, uh, beach?
Beach, it's nice when you take time for yourselves to do stuff outside the belt, exploring beaches and whatnot, when you can get away from the house, I totally agree. I love those parts too.
Me too.
Those are really fun.
I do it enough.
Yes.
It was a big scramble now, like, it's just bad weather day after bad weather day, now storm after storm, um, we're already kinda shagged. You know what I mean, this all should have been weather tight outside weeks ago, um, just like life is, it gets away from you, um. Time goes fast when you think, and here we are, mid-November, and just screaming inside, and. It's a lot of wood showing still, outside, which is not good, so we're kinda shagged already, but. We can't stop now, we can't just stop and go gallivanting around on the islands, um, you know, picking berries, we gotta work, we just gotta work.
Yeah, it's even, yeah, it's sorry, it's even hard for me sometimes to like, wanna do like a little art project, or like. Decorate, or just do something creative, cause I'm like, well, I feel bad, like, I shouldn't be doing something for the house, or like moving the needle forward with that, like. I feel like it's pointless for me to write a song, or. Dry oranges for garland, which I did today, which felt really fun, but still, it feels sort of pointless, even though like it feeds the soul. Which is important too, next question, Hill Billy Lucas, big red, the best, where's she at? I don't remember her getting home, the three wheeler.
Oh, she's still live here, girl, don't you worry about her, you almost see her much, but she's here. Still meeting her, we'll get her out again soon to use it.
Yeah.
On a video.
After, yeah, now after having the, uh, oh my gosh, the six by six, it's like Cadillac. Cadillac, plus.
So useful.
Yeah, and we, when we ride double, like I used to have to have my butt hanging off on like. The metal part of the back of the trike, and every single bump is like that, and not comfortable, and this little baby would be like doing backflips.
Well, that's going off, you couldn't even run it with the fish pan, right, it was a one seater, every time we go anywhere, Kelly would just walk.
What a gentleman, right?
You, you're so good at driving, you, you wanna go drive.
I love it, I love it, I love it.
Pig slaughter TM, good question, um, we're gonna last few bags of feed left, said that once before, we got more feed. Um, hopefully next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
The longer the better, really, we're thinking, cause we want the coal here, wanna hang the pigs for, um, a few days. Before we proper butcher it up, and cooler the better for no flies.
Yes, Brett, Brett is asking, have you ever thought of getting a horse with like twenty horse emojis? Yes, man, I really want a horse, I have four horses back down in Virginia, I love them, um. Yeah, I've had a horse since I was thirteen years old, now I'm turning twenty-seven, and I still have the same horse, and he's the best, anyway. I would love to get a horse out here, logistic wise, I question a lot of things. Uh, pasture, I want a big ass pasture for a horse, I don't want them to be in a tiny little spot, um, trails. Feed.
Not gonna have any of that stuff out here.
I know, I know, well, we have trails and stuff, but.
Ain't no pasture. Ain't no trails.
I know.
Me and the quad trails.
Yeah, the quad trails, duh. But I don't know, like the land is kinda marshy, and like I would be nervous for a horse to like break its leg.
Newfoundland pony.
A Newfoundland pony would be good, however, they're only like this tall, I've seen a few at some farms passing by. I haven't ridden one, but they are pretty darn small, I have a quarter horse and thoroughbred, so I'm used to like tall horses, and like riding perchance and stuff, so those guys are big. Um, so I don't know logistically how that would go. But I really do want a horse, before we were having baby, I was like, oh, in the next two years, we'll have a horse. I don't think that's gonna happen now, um, there's just a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot. Yes.
Has Manny been in the States before, yes, Carlos, my son, that's where I met the old lady, who was in the States. I used to shear alpacas down in the States, like a torn little circus gremlin. Going frame to frame, sleeping in the back of a truck each night, covering sweat and alpaca piss and spit, God, we used to reek and stink.
And that's where I met you and fell in love.
That's where she met me.
Stinky and gross, and in a cutoff shirt.
Yeah, I was like three days out with no shower, to the point I met Kelly, covered in sweat, piss and.
Alpaca spit.
Spit.
Such a bad smell, now I think about it, alright guys, we love you so much, thank you for being here with us. Thank you for all of your questions, thank you for all the love, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Can we make it five hundred? You guys are so awesome, thank you all for all your love, as always, thank you for spending your time with us. Like we said at the beginning, good morning, or good evening, or good night, we love you guys so much, and we will see you again. This Sunday, for another video.
Forty, week forty.
Yeah, week forty.
Forty Sundays, I don't think I've ever done anything in my life other than a job. Uh, where I was like forty weeks.
Yeah.
I'm American that for something.
It's insane, I can't believe how fast the time has gone, and also it feels very slow, but you guys make it feel so worth it, and. Getting to know you guys is absolutely the cherry on top of all of this, and seeing you guys here, interacting with you guys, so, yeah.
Love these, uh, love these town hall meetings.
Yeah.
Lot more fun than I had originally thought, thought it'd be a lot more just like, um, let's just try to drag it out or whatever. Not at all, you guys are so interactive, uh, thank you so much for all your comments, your support, boys, we love you. Um, no big news for you this week, well, that's how some weeks are gonna be, thanks for coming anyway. Um, and yeah, there you go, over five hundred, we are over twenty thousand dollars, congratulations, people, uh, we'll be here in trust. And, uh, yeah, we're gonna do some good shit together, a long ways to go, yeah, peeps, it's only week six, we got, you know, imagine, imagine year six.
My goodness gracious, amazing.
Sitting here with a little radio.
Little, little, little baby here, la, 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 second on the way in the oven, I'm just kidding, not yet. We love you guys so much, take care and goodnight.